Wednesday, January ninth, two thousand nineteen. This is your weekly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're actually, we are two times a month now. I gotta get in the habit of that. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be broadcast live on Channel nine, replayed on Channel nine, and also placed in perpetuity on YouTube. And with that, I ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to mention the passing of Robert Mullen, Sister Lucia Gomez, and Bernice Bunny Waller. I think most people remember Mr. Mullen. He attended our meetings regularly and quite often was our only public input. Sister Lucia lived at the novitiate in, on Elm Street, and had various assignments and actually helped found the novitiate on Elm Street. And Ms. Waller was known as Bernice Bunny Waller, and she lived in the North End and was also well-known in town. So in their memory, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And our condolences to their family and friends. Okay. This evening, first on our agenda, we have some appointments. Thank you for being patient gentlemen. The first is an update on the Dyton Police Station. We have Taylor McDonald from Palmeroy Associates. We also have Mr. McGee, who is the chairman of the Police Station Building Committee. And then we will review, act, and discuss a vote on the contract extension. So we did receive this email from you, Mr. McDonald, but rather than read it, did you want to sort of summarize?
Do you want to come up?
Sure, if you don't mind.
Yeah. I thought it would be a good time, Taylor McDonald, Palmeroy Associates, to give a quick overview of kind of where the project is too, because it might help with our discussions tonight. So we are looking at a substantial completion date, which means the building's built and operable for its intended use, January fifteenth. So next week, we're looking at that timeframe right now. Our punch lists are underway right now. So the building is being, you know, final painted, final caulking. Any little tidbits that are left open are being completed at this time. So the department themselves are looking to move in probably early part of February. Even though we get substantial completion mid-January, we have to work out the radio systems, the phone systems, get training on the new radio system, training on the lighting systems, really, you know, everything so that they're not walking into a station they can't use. So they're looking at the middle part of February. And then we talked about doing a grand opening ceremony, probably the first part of March. The reason it's after the opening or the move-in is because the department would like to get in and get their arms around everything before bringing the public through so they can explain all the new areas and the systems they're working with. So that's pretty much where we stand right now. I did provide a budget update in everything I gave to you. Our contingency right now is just over three hundred and sixty thousand. So we're looking at turning money back to the town at the end of this project. We're under budget by that amount. We do have some open change orders right now in the range of forty-five thousand dollars. A few, one change order might have, you know, six or seven changes within that. Many of those are owner upgrades. So after doing the math and talking about our extension that I want to talk to, talk about tonight, you know, if we were to use two hundred and fifty thousand as a round number, you know, probably estimated going back to the town at the end of the project is what we're targeting right now.
Great.
I think we've done a great job of managing this budget. Dennison and his team have done a great job of assisting with that throughout the process, and it's been a good project so far.
Absolutely. I did have one question, but I want to defer to my colleagues first if they have any questions.
Sure. Sure. You're late two and a half, or they're late two and a half months. Can you go on a little bit as to why?
Yeah. So the first part of the project, if you remember last February, March, it was a very difficult cold winter. And that's really where we lost time. The first part of the project during the winter season pushed us off. And also combined with utilities, which everybody knows aren't always the easiest to deal with, coordinating those utilities and getting them there on time. The electrical service was late in getting there. So that kind of pushed off some things we had to do in the building.
Late in, like, time-wise?
Final service, yeah.
But how long were they late? How much?
Probably about a month. So we were able to work around that and kind of do other things while we're waiting for that service. But the total hit to our schedule was about two and a half months. So that's why I'm saying January fifteenth. Our original substantial completion date was October twenty-seventh, on thereabouts. So what I was asking for in our contract, we currently have somebody that's on-site there daily, Alan. He's in the audience tonight. He's our onsite clerk of the works, our project manager. So we were looking to cover his costs that he's, you know, been on-site, that additional time. I don't think the additional time is due to anybody not working hard enough on the project or anything that really went wrong that, you know, wasn't really out of our hands, namely the weather and the utilities themselves.
So what does that cost, then?
One second. The additional cost was thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And the way I came to that amount was we had a certain month that we were billing monthly to have Alan on-site. And that was fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. So I took that times two and then took a half of a month. So.
And regarding the architect, you said that there may be some additional expenses. Are you, how much are you thinking?
So he was billing about seven thousand a month. So I'm estimating, you know, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars. I haven't heard anything from him yet. To be frank, his, his part in the project right now is pretty slim. He's monitoring the punch list, which he owned anyway. So the impact to him shouldn't be that great, if anything.
All right. And so when you say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the contingency may go back to the town, that's the change order plus?
Plus this additional. Yeah. Because right now, we're right around three sixty.
Perfect.
So if I could continue.
Sure, of course you can.
So on some of the items that you're reviewing for change orders, you got relocated receptacle and prisoner processing at the cost of two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Are we talking about one receptacle or one outlet that we're moving?
That one, we actually just crossed off the list. We're not doing that. But that was one receptacle, yeah. And the issue there was you'd have to core through the masonry walls that are in detention. So there was some masonry work, painting, patching. But we actually said no to that today, so that's coming off the list.
And there were other items like relocate cell check devices?
Yeah.
Why are they being relocated?
So as part of the sign-off for the cells, a, a plan of the cells has to go to the Department of Health. And we have cell check devices that when you walk in the area of the cells, they're right there on your left, and then your cells are beyond them. Department of Health wants them on the other wall, so you have to walk past the cell to hit the cell check device. So our plans, we had to move them. We already had them located in one area. After they did the review of the plans, they said we would like them over here. So it's a state requirement.
So we did the work before the review?
Correct, yeah. It was, it was all roughed in because it's all block wall. So as the block walls were going up, they had to get the conduit and boxes there. So again, we do have to do some coring there. We're going to surface mount as much as we can to keep the cost down. But it is a requirement of the state.
So the estimated cost is forty-five hundred dollars, is that?
Correct.
Is that going to be the figure, the final figure, you think?
Most likely, yeah. What I've told the contractor was if there's any of that patching and painting that doesn't need to be done, we're not paying for it. So we're watching, we're keeping a T and M, time of materials, on those, on those items and watching them as they go along.
Selectmen Gulak, did you have any questions?
I was just wondering, on the items that still say under review?
Yep.
If all of those end up being approved, is that part, does that still leave two hundred and fifty thousand coming back to the town?
Yeah. So if you look on the second page, I did a total open change orders, and that's forty-seven thousand and change.
So it means like three thousand more than what you had?
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm sorry, I updated my sheet before I came tonight because I got some new information.
So if under review, if some of the under review are not approved or it's decided we're not doing it, it could be more than two hundred and fifty thousand going back to the town?
Yes.
Okay. So that, so everything approved, it's two fifty max? Excuse me. Everything approved here means two fifty's still coming back. If not everything is approved, that number of two fifty could be higher?
It could. I'm using two fifty as a round number.
Okay, I realize that.
In my head, but yes, it could be more.
So when are these decisions going to be made on under review items?
Well, very soon, within the next month or two. A week or two, I'm sorry. For instance, I actually have an updated one that, because stuff just came through today. So I did print that out.
Okay.
But for instance, number twenty-five on the list, which isn't on your old one, but it's on this one, we asked for pricing for a split-rail fence. And the reason is, we know our building's very close to the road. So we were looking at a split-rail fence that the old property had one on the corner of the Powell Plant Road and Somerset. So we were looking at a newer one that extended down the Powell Plant Road a little bit and then along Somerset Road to basically where those stones are, just to keep a line of sight, to help with plowing, to help with cars seeing that, okay, there's a property right here. So we got a pricing to do that fencing, and there's quite a bit, I think it was two hundred and fifty linear feet of fencing there, of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. So that number is in that, that number below, that forty-seven, six oh nine. But it's just a request for a price. We might say, eh, it's too expensive, we're not going to do it. Or the committee say, we don't want to do it, we'll have somebody in town do it.
So my question is, if you're going to decide amongst yourselves whether or not to proceed with these highlighted change orders, and my understanding is the Police Station Building Committee would either approve them or not, and then they would come to this board. If our meeting isn't, if the project's supposed to be done by January fifteenth and we're not meeting until the twenty-third or something of January, are we going to be holding anything up?
Nope.
Okay.
That dates just the substantial completion.
Once it's approved by the committee, you go forward with it or you wait for our vote on it?
We go forward with it.
So if we reject that figures, somebody doesn't get paid, is that what's going to happen then?
Say that again.
If we, if the board rejects, don't agree with some of these figures, that means they don't get paid, and possibility?
Like if we, if they approve?
If they approve and we reject it?
Yeah, I guess, so yeah. And, and my understanding, though, I thought Dennis had approval to approve the change orders that we were, you know, looking at.
So we're basically rubber, rubber stamping? I respect this.
No, no, no.
I respect this.
The board has to vote the changes.
Yes, but we, but if we don't, we have to accept the changes.
No, 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 you don't. If, if something comes up, and remember, we were discussing change orders and number two was missing? And I said, wait a minute, where's two? You can't go to three and four. And so we waited and we found out two was not approved.
Not approved.
So, but no. That contract and the terms under it and the payments have to be voted by the board. The committee takes care of everything. But if for some reason something happens or information comes to this board, that would say, we would say, wait a minute, no, no, we're not, we can't approve that. What would happen is, quite frankly, we would have to, the right thing to do is say, we need to negotiate this for this reason, all right? But no, it has to come back to the elected board, so.
And I assume, Dennis, that when it goes before your board, you discuss the figures and you decide whether it's appropriate?
Yeah, what happened is way, way back in the beginning of time, in one of the heat projects moving quickly, it was, it was agreed that myself and John Cronin and would be at these meetings, every one of the construction meetings, I wouldn't make the call, and we would pre-approve at the meeting every line item of change order. So, and then it became first a PCO, whatever, the abbreviation, before we gave a change order. And then we would negotiate and talk about the prices. That means myself, our whole committee, myself, and then between me and the OPM representing us, we would negotiate the actual final on every one of the line items. Okay? Then, after that was, that was agreed to, it became a change order. The committee was made aware of it at a committee meeting of what was agreed to. But they all voted at a committee meeting to allow me and John to be representing them rather than everybody come into a meeting and have a feud over what one line item is all about.
And it makes sense that you get, that you get to make that decision right then and there versus waiting a week or two or whatever, when something needs to be done right away?
The project would have been slowed down a lot more if you had to worry about every change order item that might have been a thousand or whatever. So yeah, it moved along a lot faster because of it. And I, I was always there to make sure, representing. And so you would always see on the final change order, let's say it's change order four that's going to come to you, you'd see me signing off as the chair, representing Dyton Police Station Building Committee. Okay? And then they would be made aware of what, what, what those line items were on the actual breakdown.
So we need to decide if we're going to vote on the contract extension? And again, the, the one for Palmeroy is thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes.
Because we need to know the exact figure?
Yes, yes.
So I am accepting motions on that in either direction.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve a contract extension for Palmeroy Associates in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
And do we have to put the extension date, January fifteenth?
Well, I think it's going to go beyond that.
Yeah, we're, our services are?
It's till the end of the project.
Until, yeah, I'm here until the building's dogs have an issues period. This was just to cover Alan's time.
We're locking in this cost.
Yes.
It's not going to exceed this.
We'll not, we'll not change.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, since the town accountant's here, this will be an amendment to the contract. Have you seen anything or has anything been given to her to review, other than?
I believe this was sent, no?
I, I, you just gave me the number now.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I was more concerned with the UTS contract that they don't have, but they're doing work. That's the one I'm really interested in.
Okay, so you don't have any questions or comments on what we just voted on?
As long as I sign off on it as to availability of funds. By law, I have to do that.
Okay.
That keeps getting missed.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you very much. You're very welcome. Thank you, Mr. McGee.
So I do want to talk about, in your packet too, was I put the UTS extension in there. Not really an extension, but our, UTS is our testing company. And in our budget line for UTS, we carried?
I don't remember that either. What did you give us?
I thought I sent that along. It looked like this.
No, we never got that.
Oh, no. They don't have that.
I actually have a question on that.
Sure.
I did see it, that's the one that you sent to her. There's no date, there's no signature. And it says, UTS Mass Incorporated. Everything else they've given us says, UTS of Massachusetts Incorporated.
Yeah, that's how they, that's how they signed it.
And this isn't, this is not going to be a change order.
See, it's not a change, it's not a change order, though. So our budget had a budget of twenty thousand dollars for material testing.
Is this about UTS?
It is.
I feel like we, I don't even know, I have nothing about this, so I can't say anything in either direction. And we are like ten minutes behind the appointment, so.
So this was, this item on the agenda tonight was specifically for the updates that you did provide.
Okay.
I can call you tomorrow and talk about the UTS, and we'll be on that call together.
That's fine.
I would, yeah, we need to move along. And I would prefer to know that the people involved that should be discussing all this with you, have got their questions. Everything's reasonable, and we got a document similar to this that says, this is what we're talking about and this is what we're asking you to look at.
To consider.
Yeah, I, I thought I sent it over, but just so, it's not any additional lines that we're talking about.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Their contract was for ten thousand. You want their contract to be twenty thousand?
Their budget line is for twenty in our budget.
That's the building budget you're talking about. Their contract was ten thousand dollars. Their bid was nine thousand. So there's just a lot of things that will work.
But the amount we're carrying from this twenty.
But their contract was ten.
Yep, we're going to move.
So that's a bump that's going to get ironed out before it comes back to us.
We're going to move on to the Lions Club and the People Locator Program.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Gentlemen.
Hello.
Mr. King?
Just a couple minutes, okay? My name is John King.
Of course.
I remember the Dyton Lions. We've been around for a little over sixty years in town. And we do a lot of things, we're most famous for our cow chip, our art festival, the pavilion. We do a lot of things that people don't know about. Real quick, I don't want to spend much time. We put the elementary, the library, the elementary school many years ago. We have quite a few rooms, the elementary school, that we put the white-out systems in so people could hear. There's a lot, we have the pavilion, we're going to be breaking the bocce court very quickly.
Nice.
Reason why I'm here is to let people know we're in town. We do the food bank, we love to have people come down. Don't be embarrassed if they need to come and see us. Reason why I'm here is we're renewing an old project and starting a new project. It's not going to cost the town of Dyton anything, the town people nothing. It's just something that we do, it's another project that you don't hear about. And basically, I've talked to the fire pomper about it, he's agreeing with it. I want to give some here. We're doing a people locator. If you know, years ago, they used to have the kids located that went in bedroom windows?
Bedroom stickers, yes.
Bedroom stickers. And then they moved out and it became a room and you could never get the stickers off. I still have one for my daughter, to be honest with you, okay? And they're tough to get out. So I came across this a while back and I brought it in front of the group. And basically, it's considered people locator. The reason why it's considered, senior citizens, people that have disabilities, kids, whatever. You can put it, it has a suction cup on the top, okay? You can move it around. I talked to the fire chief, he already has a hundred of them sitting down in his office. He's very, very pleased with it. So we're starting this project again. It's not going to cost any, just come in and register. You don't even register, just come and take them. Out in front of the assessor's office, I have my little orange bucket here.
Okay.
And please, I mean, anybody, I have no children in my house, just my wife and I have, I have one that I use around, so it's no charge. I mean, there's a bunch of them here right now, and there's, I just gave Sue a hundred more. And we feel it's something that we do for the community. Most people don't realize what we do. Again, we're known for the cow chip, the art festival. We do a lot on the side, the food bank, the eyeglasses. We do have wheelchairs disposable if they need.
Earring aids?
Earring aids, or earring aids has glasses. We always, we send kids to school, you know, have the ears tested. The big thing is, a lot of people don't realize it, especially with the new people moving in town, we're just trying to help out whatever we can. So if you guys want to take them, and Mallory's already got a couple.
Sorry, I have mine.
So feel free, I mean, we have plenty of them. And Ed's going to take over the second half, he's going to bring up an old project that we're doing, kind of renewing.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Put it on our website.
If you want something, you can grab your hand phone and I'll take the bucket at the end.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I'm guessing I'm the old guy, because Dyton Lions have been in existence?
Sixty years.
Sixty, fifty, I think, yeah, sixty years. Well, I've been, this is my fifty-fourth year, so. But I was only a little kid when I joined. But we do have a, we do have another project, and it's another one that's for free. People have medications. And you can put your medications here, put them in this large container, and put it on your refrigerator, or whatever, in the kitchen. And then there is a small one, identical, except it goes into a little pouch you can put in your wallet. And, and if you ever need an emergency, the ambulance comes to your house or whatever, everything is right there. And, you know, you don't have to say, wow, I got this, if somebody asks you. Everything is in black and white. And again, this is another free of charge thing that the Lions do do. And the fire chief has these, and has had for quite a few years. So we just want to renew some of these things that we do, get back to the town when we can.
Very good. I'm glad to hear about the bocce court, because I asked about that today. And Jamania said, I haven't heard anything, I don't know.
We were getting plans, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, foundation.
When you rely on volunteer or in-kind services, you have to go with whatever they can do.
Right, I understand. I'm just glad it's still alive.
Yes, it is.
Your question, when it's time to break the ground, you see it as soon as it gets a little warmer.
Every time I see The Godfather, Part One, I say, the bocce scene.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Both of you also like this located fire pomper, the library in here, and I'll take the, excuse me. I'll take the bocce, I thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. And this is outside the assessor's office?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have a good night. All right. So next, we have a discussion about budget organization with our town accountant, Jennifer Louise. Good evening. How are you?
Well, I wanted you to have an appointment, so you're going to be back here with us all the time. This is the memo that I passed out earlier tonight to you. So the town accountant and I got together over the last year. We've had random miscellaneous conversations about, well, it doesn't make sense that that's there, it would be better suited here. So we finally got together and identified what those are. We're here just looking for your support on it. We ended up doing all the work, well, Jen, reorganizing. But just to recap, most of this reorganization revolves around the Budget 192, buildings and, public buildings and property maintenance. So the Board of Selectmen's budget has an item called Communications Commingled Billing, and this is for our internet costs and our, and our phones. That is actually becoming a town-wide expenditure for all of our buildings. So we'd like to move that into Public Buildings 192. Random budgets, not random, budgets with buildings. So Police Department, Fire Department, they have an energy line and a non-energy line, non-entries, utilities, water and sewer, as Jen explained to me today. And instead of identifying each building's use, we think it would be more proper to have it in the public buildings line. And we can then go forward with national grid more easily and have one bill or one account and eliminate some of these minimum charges or minimum accounts that we do have with certain accounts. So we want to go in there, sort of clean that up and reorganize it. Cleaning expenses, same sort of thing. The library and the police department have a line for their cleaning expenses for their nighttime custodial staff. Again, it's one contract with one individual, so it should be paid out of one line instead of requiring different invoices and all of that. Items like pest control, security alarms, custodial supplies, groundskeeping supplies. You'll see, if you do look at your Budget 192, some of these lines are actually already included, but other budgets have those lines, and it should just all be in one, and we can better manage it. We've also added a budget for the ADA Coordinator, which we had discussed with you previously. And we're requesting that the Disaster Committee budget be titled Emergency Permanence. So just cleaning up some things going on in the budget.
And so, so I think this all sounds like a no-brainer. But before I accept motions, do my colleagues have any questions for either the town administrator or our town accountant?
I don't know.
Think it makes sense?
I think it's very logical. Thank you both, I appreciate it. Well, I, let us vote first, and then I'll think.
As far as getting, like, green communities thing, number two.
Absolutely, yeah, that's number two stuck out to me.
All the utilities are in one place, trying to hunt down various buildings.
All right, so I am entertaining motions pursuant to the budget organization recommendations as prepared this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget organization recommendations as mentioned earlier.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion passes. Thank you both, uh, very much.
Yep, thank you, Jen.
Mrs. Louise, Mrs. Aaronstein.
Thank you.
For working together on this, this is great, thank you. We appreciate it.
And she caught up.
Yes, that was great. Well, it was very well expla, see, this is what happens when you get a document and it's like very clear what it is, so it was like no explanation necessary, it was a no-brainer. So I appreciate that very much. Now, we have a discussion, hopefully brief, Mrs. Kuchar, for you, for you.
Hopefully that intro on things that weren't clear was...
No, 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 no.
We have, we have no more times listed, you've got the rest of the night.
I know.
So, we're going to discuss the Regional Agreement Task Force, Task Force appointments. So, I just wanted to start off, um, by apologizing, so, it wasn't that your letter wasn't clear that we had received, it wasn't your letter, but the letter that we had received, I had assumed, for whatever reason, that we were meeting, and I told you this, that we were meeting, or two people from this board were going to meet with the task force, and that was wrong, and we need to appoint two people to form the task force, as part of the task force, is that correct?
Correct. As a result of our meeting in October, when we had the full school committee meeting with representatives from both towns.
Finance.
Board of Selectmen, Dyson, Board of Selectmen and both finance committees. And Chris Andrey was chair at the time and presented the draft agreement that the Regional Agreement Amendment Task Force made up of, at the time, six school committee members prepared. Um, at that meeting, by the end of that meeting, we felt, uh, members of the school committee felt that there was some room for, um, perhaps compromise, I'll call it. It seemed that some people thought, from both sides, that there was perhaps more in common than they anticipated might be with this draft agreement. Um, so our options were to then vote as a school committee, do we want to take this Regional Agreement Task Force draft, and work amongst ourselves as a school committee, ten-member school committee, or do we want to, the second option was, we discussed that evening, having a smaller group from both towns meet with the task force, and see if, in fact, there was any room for compromise, or if there were commonalities in places where we could work, prior to sending it to the full committee for a vote, and then onward to the town meetings. So, our school committee voted to, in fact, do just that. Uh, we're down to, our task force is now four members, um, so four members of the school committee, and we're looking forward to, perhaps, our thought was, of course, one person from each town and a finance committee member from each town.
I think that makes sense.
That would meet with us and see, we're, we're not thinking this is going to be lengthy and ongoing, a meeting or two, perhaps, where we could meet and discuss.
So what's the total task force makeup, two from Dyson, two from Rehoboth?
Eight.
And four from the school committee.
Four school committee members are presently on the task force.
Two from each town.
Um, my fellow, Kathy, yes.
I like how you do that. No, it's fair, it is. Um, Selectmen Bachi, do you have anything, sir?
No, I'm in agreement with that, as you know, we had some discussion the last time, it was, kind of felt that people were being ignored, and looked like maybe, and clearly that was wrong. Uh, I had an opportunity to speak to you, and you convinced me that this is something we ought to go for, so we should have two members, a member of the Board, like, and a finance committee, a member of the public task force.
It's a question of public meeting, so...
Yes.
Anyone can go, I understand.
So I'm in favor of...
Yeah, I just didn't understand.
I agree, I agree with him, because we were trying to, we thought we were being asked to send two, and we, and then it said, uh, I forgot, something like, the further step or the final step, and I said, but what is it? Is it town meeting? We, the, the letter did not convey the intent, I'll just leave it at that. So, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Agreed. Um, okay, so, we need to, I don't know if it's one motion or two motions, um, but we need to appoint, it sounds like, according to what the recommendation has been, a Board of Selectmen representative and a Finance Committee representative. Quick question before we, before I entertain motions, actually, do you know who, have you heard from Rehoboth, that they also will be doing Board of Selectmen in FinCom?
That's what they've suggested, yes.
Okay, chairman?
Um, Mr. Schwall and Mr. Solis.
Okay, all right.
So, do you feel comfortable then to be, be in the representative for the, because I know you've been involved in this agreement in the past?
Who's on the FinCom? Do we have a Dyson FinCom name?
I do not.
I would, can, may I make a suggestion? And, and if you have someone in mind, that's fine, too. Um, I would feel confident if it's me from the Board of Selectmen, um, going in there with, um, Ed Swartz, our chairman of the Finance Committee.
Or, if he's not available, he can appoint an alternative.
Someone he feels...
Somebody who'll fill in for him, because he travels a lot.
That's fair. Is that okay? All right, so I will entertain motions, I'm sorry, do you have a question first?
No, I'll go through the discussion.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Chairman Brett Sacraffas and Finance Committee Chairman, uh, Ed Swartz, to this committee to represent the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen at this task, on this task force.
Thank you. Um, we have a motion and a second discussion, Selectmen Gula.
So, what is going to be the end product of the task force?
Our goal at this point is, that evening, we took notes on what were some of the, uh, some of the feedback that we see, we received from both towns, so we're going to take those notes and see if we can discuss what both towns gave us this feedback, and what perhaps they had in common, and if there's any movement at all, there may be, there may not be. We may end up with the same agreement, that, the same draft that the task force has prepared. Um, it then will go to the full school committee, and we still need a vote of the school committee, and once the school committee votes, then they will decide to pass it on.
Okay, all right.
Like, it would go to the towns eventually, okay.
Because at that meeting, I think it was left, when Chris wrapped it up, that the school committee was going to collect everything, but that didn't happen, collect everything and put an agreement together. The collection is there, now the task force is going to put something together.
And we will bring that, and Chris had already presented that task force draft to our school committee.
Okay, thank you.
And I thank you for, and we haven't voted, but, you know, I do thank you for thinking about a way, uh, to streamline the process, to get us to that point where it's in a final version that hopefully is palatable to everyone.
And that's the reason for this, too, we obviously would like the support of members of both towns.
Absolutely. Well, you've, and the school committee has spent much more time than, you know, this board has going to meetings about it, so I know that you're hoping, you know, that it comes out with a product we can all be proud of, so, um, with that being said, uh, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion passes. Thank you so much, Mrs. Kuchar, as always.
Forward to work, Mrs.
Absolutely.
See that, you got the whole time.
Well, your scarf. I know, every time. Thank you.
Have a good night, Mrs. Kuchar. And at this time, I would like to, as is customary, actually, I want to move to public input, uh, Mr. Higgins, Mrs. Souza, anything this evening?
I want the agenda, I need this.
Okay. Mr. Higgins? All right, we will move on to Town Administrator's Report. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Tammon, good evening. Um, the first item on my report is just to review the Board of Selectmen budgets, these are the handful of budgets that come under your purview. I am not anticipating a vote tonight, I just wanted to submit this to you, the department request figures that I, uh, filled in here are just my recommendations, um, it's up to you, though. Some of them, uh, you do have this cover sheet, too, as well, as which ones that are for you, so if you'd like to, um, vote on the items like forestry, which is just a two percent increase for the salary that that line is, you know, that could happen, um, town council's level funded, most of these were level funded or two percent increase for, I'm sorry, Selectmen Bachi, I put that closer, too.
Is it your hope that we take the next two, when do you want to start having the conversation?
Next meeting, we need to vote on it, uh, we've put everybody on this very tight deadline of January thirty-first.
Okay.
Um, so I'd like us to be able to follow that.
And, and come in with, with prepared, you know, things that, specific things you want to discuss, we want to discuss, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to my colleagues.
Sure, or, I mean, I'm happy to sit down one-on-one and get your feedback, um, in that.
Before the meeting?
Before the meeting, and I can compile it all together.
Selectmen Gula?
Um, then, just one thing to know, items like workers' comp insurance, liability insurance, IM, and building insurance, I am going out to bid for that. Um, I have level funded it and increased it in some areas, um, just due to the use of Old Town Hall at this point, now it's up and running and fully used, um, so, just in anticipation of that, but those figures will change as we get going in that process, and hopefully a competitive process.
Okay, so we have our homework.
Yes.
Over the next week, two weeks.
Right.
And I will ask my colleagues, when we're done with the Town Administrator's Report, if we could move out of order to eight A?
Yeah, I was thinking of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, just to keep things simple as well, sh, well, never mind, never mind. Thank you.
Budget, uh, budget question, um, once we get through our initial review, what's approximately the timetable to meet with the Finance Committee, what March?
So you're, you mean for this or everything, the whole budget?
Once we get the whole budget put together in...
Usually March.
March and April, uh, last year and the year before, it was four meetings in April.
It was, yeah, I remember that.
So, based on their schedule, um...
I used to do that schedule.
So, that's what, but we've requested everybody to keep their deadlines, a lot of, uh, a large issue we experienced last year was continual changes with department requests, so we've directed everybody to kind of get all of that out of the way before even submitting, and a lot of committees are actually holding their meetings, um, in January, and getting everything, yeah.
Think, reflect, you know, be reflective and thoughtful during the process of creating it, unless last minute, sort of, you know, rigamarole.
Reaction, yeah. And there are some ways that, you know, some budgets that can't do that, things like trash removal, um, stuff like that, but...
Of course.
Just having, you know, being, providing the opportunity to have the discussion about it sooner rather than later.
Absolutely, Madam Administrator.
So, thank you, that is that. Um, the next item is an exciting item, and I will ask you just for a vote of Declaration of Availability, Council Oak documents are up. Uh, this is our request for proposals to lease the farming land that is at zero Council Oak Way, formerly known as Council Oak Two. It's a little over six acres, I think six point oh-two-four acres, um, an exciting opportunity, the documents are on our website, uh, it'll be advertised in the central, oh, today, it was advertised in the Central Register, and it'll be advertised in the Town Gazette as well, on the sixteenth of January and the twenty-third of January, and, um, RFPs are due here in person, my office, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, um, by four PM, actually, did I say four PM?
Three PM.
What, twelve PM, excuse me.
Three.
Am I saying three?
February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Twelve PM.
Twelve PM.
February fourteenth.
Nope, that is, oh, those are questions that you're looking at, so anybody has questions, that's February fourth, that's three PM.
Three PM, yes, that's what I was looking at.
Um, but all of this is up on our website, if that was confusing to anybody, just go check that out, and that is...
That is exciting.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, great, I love when a plan comes together.
If you could just vote officially on the declaration, that's okay, on the Declaration of Availability.
I thought it was already out there.
All right, I am entertaining motions pursuant to the farming and land management opportunity regarding Council Oak Two.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, publishing of the Declaration of Availability, request for proposals, all relative to the Council Oak Two farming opportunity.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. And I don't know if you said this, but it is, this is also online, you don't have to come down to Town Hall and see it if you don't want to. Madam Administrator.
Uh, the next item is also very exciting, uh, if you haven't heard, the town of Dyson has achieved its Green Communities designation, uh, which opens us to a lot of opportunities for funding. Thank you to Selectmen Sacraffas and the Green Communities Committee who really drove that, um, initiative.
Thank you all for supporting it.
So, we have some correspondence I included, just for your information about the grant application guidance, the funding available to the town of Dyson is a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and six, a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars. Uh, we do not need to utilize all of it at once, and if we don't, it doesn't mean that we lose it. We are on a very tight deadline, uh, February eighth is the due date at five PM, um, and in order to have a fully submitted application, a lot of, um, projects go narratives and estimates, accurate estimates, design specifications do need to be submitted depending upon our projects, and that's why I'm saying, let's not maybe go for everything.
You mean everything that was in the energy reduction plan that we approved?
Correct, right, right.
Sure.
We'll get there eventually, just not this round, yeah.
And there are competitive grants, when you said there are opportunities, those are the opportunities that were opened up to, it's not just the initial grant, it's the ones that are handed out on a project-by-project basis.
And we also get extra points on other grants for, like, climate change action grants, you have, uh, extra points for being, having this designation. So, the building commissioner and I got together and threw out various ideas with the energy reduction plan and, um, our own kind of requests, mine, a big one, is to replace the furnaces in this town hall. Um, so, I gave you a list of all the project ideas, that's the top, and then the two bottoms are the building commissioner's recommendations and my recommendations, um, and there you have it, and the totals for it. Um, I, I don't know, in the interest of time, if you want to take this and look at it and, and recommend the items tonight, or if you want to designate a selectman as the person that we will work with, um, that is really what I'm seeking.
Can I give my, what I think?
Yeah.
So, I'm going to be perfectly honest, the projects that are listed on both yours and the building commissioner's sort of top three, because again, we can't do everything, and if we don't use everything, you know, it sits there and waits till perhaps we get another competitive grant, and now we can pay for, uh, further improvements. Um, they were in the energy reduction plan, so the only thing that wasn't explicitly part of the energy reduction plan that the board already approved was the, um, electric charging stations, um, because obviously, a furnace replacement falls under the sort of nondescript language that was part of the energy reduction plan, uh, sort of recommendations on energy improvements, and obviously, the attic installations as well. Um, I think electric charging stations, and we've talked about this, Town Administrator Aaronstein, I think that that is not just a good, um, symbol in terms of where the town is moving, in terms of its energy efficiency and commitment to being more energy efficient, but I also think that, um, it will be helpful, um, especially since we passed the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, if we were going to think about, um, having maybe administrative vehicles that, and we got our five-year wish list, there were some on there, um, having them be hybrid, and having the infrastructure so that we could have hybrid vehicles, exactly, to support it. Um, so, my preference, um, that I've highlighted are the Town Administrator's top three, but I do want to emphasize the importance, in my opinion, since sixty-one percent of our energy consumption is coming from town buildings, I do think, maybe with another grant, since we're going to have thirty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars left over, if we took the Town Administrator's recommendations, that we think about in the future, doing the replacement of windows and things like that, so that the energy, when we use the air conditioning, when we use the heat in the winter, that it's not just going out through insulation that could be improved. So, um, again, long-winded, I apologize to everybody, uh, but I do support the Town Administrator's top three. Selectmen Bachi.
I also support the top three, but I am also concerned about the windows, as you just pointed out, is it possible, because we do have some other, we have some money here, to do some of the windows, I know, we're going to, we're going to do all the windows, clearly, to have it work, you can't do half the windows, but if we can use some of those, maybe one of the floors...
I was just going to say, suggest that, one floor, and I know that the two downstairs had leaked last year, um, so, maybe targeting the lower level.
I, I love that.
And I hope with windows, we don't go with these crank-out things, because they don't fit tight.
They don't actually make the parts very easily anymore, so...
Well, they do, they don't seal, I've, I've only got it in my kitchen, and, and they're new, so I crank them in and I put the thing down, but, um, personally, I think windows that you can raise and lower, you have a better seal on them.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I support these, and I have some news for you, as a matter of fact, electric vehicles, we exempted the police department, I've got a color ad I will show you, because I got two copies, I gave one to the chief and said, "Police vehicles to come." Ford has developed the hybrid.
Awesome.
And...
That's cool.
The whole point, and it's, and it's talking in this two-color spread, it's an ad, but it tells you, uh, where they've been deployed, and the amount of savings for the cruiser it tells you, uh, where they've been deployed, and the amount of savings for the cruiser because of idling time, when it's idling, it goes electric, and when it's in pursuit, obviously, it's.
You want the, uh, yeah.
And Bob first laughed at me, and I says, "I'm serious, take this with you, show this to the guys." Ford has the market on cruisers. They've got them, and they've got them deployed, and they've got, um, data. So, I s, I'm thinking of this program, um, that the charging stations, uh, you know, uh, on those nights when the gas stations are closed, or you gotta go to Somerset or Rehoboth to get gas, um, the fact that you have the hybrid, and it's.
Alleviates that, yeah.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll pass that ad on to you, because I did a double take when I saw it.
I know, I, I hope I get to see it, I'm looking forward to it.
It may be in my brief, it may be in my briefing, it just, it was a middle-page spread in a magazine, I think it's called Town and County.
Oh, I know that.
Oh, I know.
Publication, yeah, they mail them out, and, um, I always see what's in there, but when I opened up that and said, "Wow," so I pull those out, so, but I've got one, I think there's one in my case.
I did wanna ask.
Maybe we buy one of those.
So, we would have, oh, sorry.
There's a potential.
Just buy a, buy that, an electric, electric cruiser.
That would be cool.
Hybrid, not electric.
Yeah.
Hybrid cruiser.
So, and one would be Old Town Hall, we're thinking, I don't even want.
You mean charging stations?
Old Town Hall and Town Hall.
One and one, yep, one and one. And then, uh, we also talked about, okay, well, who pays for the electricity to charge this thing? Um, so, we looked into the machines that have the credit card, you just put your card up to the scanner thing, and, uh, it's pay per user, so, the taxpayer is not on the hook for maybe somebody from, um, Taunton coming over and charging their vehicle.
But it's a great service to have available for the general public.
Right, absolutely.
Absolutely.
You won't be wondering, where can I get my car charged on?
And it enables us to actually explore what we've promised, we've, we've promised the state, yeah, we're gonna look into electric vehicles, if we don't have these stations, how do we do that?
Oh, I want.
Plug them in, in the garages.
I agree. It all comes down to logistics, but I did also want to mention that a lot of the information, and again, we'll look into, I would assume if this passes this evening, that we would look into, um, for estimates and things like that, we, we might start looking at different vendors. I did have a lot of information regarding the electric, um, charging stations from the MMA meeting last year, um, when we went to that booth, so, plug for you, MMA. Um, so, we have a good starting point for where to look.
So, these figures are es- estimates, then, right?
Um, yes, very conservative estimates. Um, we did, so the furnace, because it's such, I mean, uh, yes, the furnace, because it's such a big undertaking, um, what it is, is four furnaces that need to be replaced, each one of them, and they tie into an item that is on the energy, energy reduction plan with smart thermostats. So, right now in Town Hall, my office will be freezing, but the town accountants will be sweltering, and, uh, sometimes we switch, I'll warm up and she'll cool off. Um, so, that, the system responds to that by room and tells it to blow cool air in the town accountant's office, but not do it in my office. Um, so, it's a pretty.
Is it self-regulating as well?
Right.
In addition to being able to do it via, you know.
Right, it's supposed to have like a brain.
Yeah.
Like, it's supposed to think and respond to the temperatures, um, so you put in the thermostats.
Instead of just zoning, two zones, it's like every room is a zone.
Every room has a zone, and it responds automatically, so it's not like, "Hey Karen, it's freezing in this, this conference room, can you, you know, change it?" She wouldn't have to do that, it would just be an automatic Wi-Fi, um, thermostat. So, that would be what we would look into, um, as part of this furnace, so that's kind of a, that's why it says seventy-five thousand dollars, it's a large undertaking. We do have tradesmen contracts that allow us to have a electrician at a certain rate that's already procured, um, but there are some things about the balancing that they just can't do, and we would need to hire somebody else out for. Um, the other items on my list, just so the public's aware, is attic installations and the electric charging stations, um, which would be one at Old Town Hall and one here at Town Hall. Um, the windows were discussed, uh, it's a big deal to keep the heat in and the cool, uh, in, in the summertime, but we feared that exploring all of the windows, they're large windows with separate window panes, and fixing that, we thought would eat up a lot of the funds, so we didn't want to go right to the full-out windows. Um, however, I think going floor, like one floor and testing it out is a nice start, but we didn't want it to eat up all of the funding.
So, are we only needing, and I, I, I mean, if you sit near one of these windows where you crank, you can feel the, the energy, yeah.
And it's sealed against the building.
Yeah, so, I guess, are we needing to do replacements, because there's no way to, I, I wish Jim was here, and I apologize if this is like not in your wheelhouse, but because, because we can't improve the insulation of those types of windows without replacing them?
Um, we probably could, but at some point, it becomes, well, how long does that last? And if you can replace the windows now, you get the energy re, like, um, rebate potentially too, so.
Yeah, the problem is, the building was, I'm guessing, I think, seventies? It wasn't thermal plain paint like we're putting in our house now, it's, the, the glass just isn't, and so, even if you could seal the frames closer to the building, if the glasses, it's not the insulated.
It's just letting it out.
Exactly.
Literally going out the window.
Right, exactly.
So, if you're thinking, so if we, it sounds like the board is in agreement, and again, we will get to voting, I promise, um, it sounds like we're in agreement that i, if the replacement of all the windows in the building would cost sixty thousand, that maybe we could say, use thirty thousand?
Or do one floor.
Do one floor.
Or just do one floor.
I'm looking, I'm thinking about doing one floor, and we'll get processing.
Which floor has the worst, I think downstairs is really bad.
Well, if it was leaking downstairs, I, you've gotta fix the leaks first.
Plus, they're like, kind of lower, where we're higher up, even though it's flush with the ground, our windows aren't touching the ground, and they're at a low point, so the potential for them to get water in is higher than it would be over here. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, no, it does.
In my non-technical.
All right, so, if neither of my colleagues have any further questions regarding the recommendations we've received on ways to expend the grant funds that we earned, I am entertaining motions.
So, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the recommendations of the Town Administrator for her three items, which is the furnace replacement and installation of a smart system with Wi-Fi thermostats to be combined with controls for light switches, attic installation at Town Hall, and electric charging stations, and it'd be two of them, in addition to replace the, uh, the windows on the first floor of the Town Hall.
Lower level.
Right.
Lower level of Town Hall.
The first, that.
No, this is, this is the first floor, it's the lower level.
He's using the European, I get what you're doing.
First floor, second floor, yes.
The plain-as-you-saying, as the French would say.
And I'm thirty-eight percent French now, my DNA, so.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? And I do want to thank the Town Administrator, I probably drove you nuts discussing this, um, but I do want to thank you for making yourself available, so I could come in personally to do that with you, um, and I think it was productive, and I'm glad to see, um, what you and the building commissioner came up with.
Thank you.
And it sounds like we're agreeing.
And while, and while we're thanking, I wanna thank you, Brett, for all the work you've done with the Green Committee, as well as the Green Committee, but, uh, without your guidance, um, uh, it's a good village, and I agree, but with your guidance, I think it ha, it happened in this town, and it wasn't necessarily gonna happen before you came here, so I, I really do appreciate what.
As for smart doors, it ain't easy being green.
That's not it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Before we move on, uh, to hopefully Agenda Item Eight A, Mrs. Souza, just a moment, um, I do wanna ask, do you still think that we should have one member of the board be the point person for this specific part of submitting the project stuff, or do you think that?
Yes, actually, I do, because if, we're on such a tight deadline that I don't wanna run any risks of losing this funding on a, basically a technicality, um, so that would actually be helpful.
I make a motion that we nominate, uh, the chairman to be that point person.
I'll second that motion.
I will accept it. As a, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. And thank you to everyone, and thank you to my colleagues for supporting this.
Thank you.
Madam Administrator for taking the ball and running with it when I was at work full-time, and also the same for you, Mrs. Brady, all the emails, um, back and forth with the circuit as well, greatly appreciated. And that's what I meant when I said it takes the Village, Green Communities Committee, uh, thank you so much. Next on the agenda, I would ask that we take our business, instead of old business, if we could move to, uh, in the interest of time for Mrs. Souza, Eight A, a request from the Dayton Council on Aging, to institute the minimum wage raise.
I'll make a motion, we take Agenda Item Eight A out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Souza.
At the face of the staff tomorrow.
Well, I thank you for hanging in there for an hour, it is greatly appreciated.
Are, are you going to?
Oh, we haven't, we didn't know yet, Mrs. Souza, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we wanted to discuss it.
You come up to the podium and just make a statement about what it is you're asking for, and then we can take action on it. We're not letting you get out of here that easy, yeah?
I was like, did I miss?
Alice, do you mind if I just briefly read what the committee did?
I don't mind, please, because that, that explains everything.
Perfect. So, we did get a piece of correspondence from our executive director of the Council on Aging, Mrs. Souza, regarding the minimum wage, and it was a vote, it looks like, um, of the Council on Aging, uh, to recommend, uh, an increased wage up to twelve dollars an hour, uh, minimum wage, be retroactively effective in the town of Dayton as of January first, twenty nineteen, and you agreed to send this to the Board of Selectmen, is that correct? Okay. Um, that pretty much explains it, did you have anything regarding the explanation?
No, except that I had talked to Mallory about it, and she said we were exempt, and then when we started talking to the board, and they said they didn't think it was right not to give it to them, and I think it only comes to like seventy cents or something like that, that they'll be getting extra. So, the board voted for it, and here I am.
How many people?
I was just gonna ask.
I think there's seven.
Okay.
Pot, pot time, nineteen and a half hours.
This would be some, I'm sorry, Mrs., I didn't mean to cut you off, this would be seventy cents times seven people, essentially.
Yeah, an hour.
Is this per, oh, so this is an hour?
An hour, yeah.
And then you have to do, are they mostly working thirty, thirty-five hours a week?
No, they're all nineteen and a half hours.
Oh, okay.
They're all part-timers.
Do we have any idea of how much, I don't, I'm not nickel-and-diming, but do, do we have any idea of how much this would be per year, total?
So, for this group of people, the town doesn't pay them, it comes through the grant, is that correct?
It's coming, yeah, it's coming through prime times, uh, the fee for services that we get for the clients, and the money we get through Bristol Elders Services, that's where the money comes from.
And prime time can take on you, that this.
Yes, right, now we can, yeah.
Okay.
So, this, just as we're talking about the financial impact to the town, if you make this vote, I would ask, ask that it would be extended to other similar positions like the salary checkers, the election workers, those types of positions that are part-time, um.
Oh, yeah, well, it, the way it's presented is, it's just a broad increase to the minimum wage in Dayton, not specific to.
Okay, well.
That's my interpretation.
Mine, mine is specific to the Council on Aging, because it was my board that voted it, my board voted that.
Okay, but you voted it to request it, but the Board of Selectmen can vote to grant it to all employees.
So, and that's just the point I'm making, I wanna make sure we're clear across the board.
That covers your, your request really sets everything in motion for all of them.
I understand now, yeah, okay.
And I get, you were just asking, advocating for prime time, but I do agree with our Town Administrator that, I don't know how we would do that, just for.
So, are they presently exempt from the minimum wage?
Municipalities are exempt.
They are exempt, well, that's a shame, quite frankly, that's.
It is, um, just like that five-day sick day, or five, five sick days legislation, municipalities are exempt from that, I mean, generally, we give much more than that, um, but yes, we're exempt.
Can I ask why the board decided on twelve dollars an hour specifically?
Because that's the minimum wage, it went up January first.
Oh, okay, oh, so we were just bringing it.
Bringing them up to by seventy cents an hour.
So, could we make a vote, though, that the, these employees, as well as other town employees, be paid the minimum wage, because it's gonna change next year, it'll come back before us.
Yep.
There's a change every year till it goes to fifteen in twenty twenty-three.
Right.
So, is it possible that we can just vote that they, that?
That you follow the minimum wage?
Well, we can adopt the minimum wage of twelve dollars an hour, effective January first, is that the date?
Yeah.
For all employees entitled to the benefit.
And so, meaning that we would now follow.
We would continue paying the minimum wage, it goes up to twelve seventy, uh, five twenty twenty.
Yeah, I think every year the board is gonna have to vote, like we do the IRS.
But do we have to, though?
Well, I think that's what Selectman Pacheco is asking, if you adopt the Massachusetts minimum wage schedule as presented tonight, we have the information here, then that would give us the information we needed to go forward to budget with FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, and all that.
Oh, I see what you mean, oh, okay.
So, if you did it now, we would, we would know, we would hang on to this.
I wanna give a point of clarification, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Souza, you were just saying that we go along with the twelve-hour minimum wage, not necessarily that we adopt via this language, the Massachusetts Wage Schedule.
The minimum wage, yeah.
Okay, the minimum wage, excuse me, is that correct?
So, would you anticipate coming back to us again next year?
When it increases again?
When it increases?
Now, I said something about putting it in the budget, so we'll talk about that, I have to talk to my board, I have a.
Hey, but what I'm saying, I think what we're all saying to you is, if we adopt this schedule tonight, for everybody who's eligible, for the time period involved, you will just automatically budget, it will be a town Board of Selectment decision, your committee will be advised for the next three years, this is what you will budget, and you don't have to keep coming back, but this is the guideline.
All right.
Okay?
That's fine.
Because we can't do it to the rest of the town and then say, "Next year, your people aren't getting it, it's better to do it."
Exactly.
So, so, across the board.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we, uh, adopt the Massachusetts Wage in Our laws, uh, as established beginning January first, two thousand nineteen, uh, through and including January first, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, excuse me, for all eligible employees.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't reducing everybody's wages down.
Talk about facing the employees.
I'll second that, that motion, and obviously, you mentioned the date, January first, but it's retroactive, so.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
My only, um, my only discussion is that the town clerks' budget that have these workers, so the, the town meeting one, and for the, the checkers and the board of registrars, um, will end up needing a transfer, but.
But this is great, because now we can budget it for the next.
We'll budget for next year, right.
Yeah, but you talked about the, the six, the six months left of this fiscal year.
This is good planning.
So, is someone eligible for minimum wage?
Yeah, I'll take the minimum wage, those long nights, you do, you're, you're working late too, my colleagues. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion to adopt the state minimum wage in laws? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes, thank you for being patient.
And thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you can tell your committee, you came in and asked for this, and gave away the town.
Now they don't have to say that.
Story of my life, isn't it?
Thanks, Alice.
Worked for the town half of my life, you know.
I appreciate it.
Yes.
It's appreciated, thank you, Alice.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Souza, have a good night. Okay, next on the agenda, we're gonna route back to old business, and the first piece of old business we have this evening is to review and approve the job description for for the police chief. We have discussed this at several meetings, so I think that having seven minutes of discussion on this should be appropriate. I actually don't, I have reviewed it. It looks like this latest draft was from January 4th of 2019. I have no comments, questions, concerns with it, but I wanted to give it to my colleagues, either whoever wants to start.
That was one of the ones I asked for a hold. I mocked it up and gave it to the town administrator. She asked if I would meet with the police chief. So, he and I sat with the mocked-up version and I did the draft. And as I was going through it, I found some grammatical changes, which I mocked, I made them and mocked up. So, he got this, what I hope is the final version, and he got the mocked-up one and.
To see where the changes came from?
And he was agreeable to what we came up with. Basically, what we did was change, consolidate things because there was some repetition.
Okay.
So, that was basically what it was.
And this comports with the contract, right?
Yes, yes. And so, the chief accepted this, so.
And you're satisfied with this?
I'm happy and the chief's happy.
Okay.
Right, that's all, that's what I say. Selectman Pacheco, did you have any questions about this job description?
Nope, I'm ready to make a motion that we accept the police chief's job description as presented.
I'm sorry.
Madam Administrator.
One request. Selectman Goulart, if you have this in Word, do you mind sending that to me so I can delete the?
I'll do it.
I'm going to delete my out-of-date version. Thank you.
You're gonna get that PDF editor we talked about.
I know.
That's a different thing.
That's coming. That is coming.
We have a mo, uh, no.
I made a motion, yeah. I made the motion.
And I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do have one question unrelated to this. Well, it's a job description, but it's not this one. Any, have we made any ground? Have we talked to the Board of Health about the animal control officers?
Oh, yeah.
But I haven't gotten anything from him. So, you updated me and I was waiting.
That was one of the ones that I talked to the town administrator about also because they had two jobs combined into one. And one of them is an appointee of the state and actually the reporting is to the state. And the town oversees that position. But I split them out. I went to the state website. I pretty much took verbatim from the state's website, the description for an animal inspector. So, we have two now job descriptions. Printed them out and I sent them to the Board of Health. And I had sent an email to Tom Pius and said, "Where are you with those job descriptions?" He said, "We made a couple of minor changes and approved them." I said, "They need to come back to the board." So, as far as I, I don't know what the changes are, but supposedly, pretty much what I sent over there is what approved.
We're just waiting to like officially get it to them. We can contact them.
When you see them, you're gonna see that they're repetitious as far as care of what the responsibilities are for small animals, household pets. The big, the big separation is the state is really focused on control of rabies. And there are some very specific duties for the animal inspector that relate to rabies. And I even mentioned in there the forms that have to be filed, the address they have to go to, the phone number for the contact. So, in the future, no one should have to say, "I don't know what I'm supposed to do with this."
Okay.
Assuming it's all in there.
We'll discuss that next meeting, then when we get this.
Why don't we tell, in the interim, to the Health Department and just see where we're at?
So, I think we'll be good to go. Just a reminder, I think it's the month of April, so maybe it's in March we should have a reminder. That's when the Board of Health has to submit the name of a nominee, okay, to the state. And then the state acts on that position and notifies the town. So, it falls under the Board of Health, except where we used to do it as a combined board. I just want to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks because it's, it's a very important appointment. And there's a lot of reporting that goes with it in order for that to be done. That's why I listed all these forms and where you get them, so.
So, we have a motion in a second to approve the job description for the police chief as prepared this evening. If we have no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
And I, I think we're all set with job descriptions because that was one of the ones that I said, "Separate", and you said, you know, "Go ahead and."
So, next on the agenda, we have the second reading of the use of Town Council policy as we have been doing for the last few months. We will not actually read it, but we will keep the option open until our next meeting for anyone in the public and my colleagues as well to submit suggestions, recommendations, and things like that.
I noted that we only had one change last time and it was made right here.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Yep. Okay, so get that in before next meeting and we will vote on this policy next meeting. Okay. Next, I'm going to throw it over to you, Madam Administrator, Policy Manual 501 and 502, updated language.
This is, this has come before you. It's the HIPAA policies. We didn't want to strike the policies because of the nature of that. We nailed down a process that we're going to take care of. We reached out to the health group that did draft that, the updated language I had sent over last time. I had hoped to have that for you today to sign. It is on its way. The treasurer's receiving that and she is going to give that out when you have a, well, everybody currently will get that out just for us to establish a baseline. But when a new hire is made, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm incorrect. It goes out with your health insurance information every year. So, every year she sends out the, what's it called, open enrollment. And it will go in with that. So, each year, we will get that. My question to you is now, now that that process is going to be implemented, do you still want this as a policy in your policy manual? Or can this be kicked over to the treasurer?
I think that if we are going to have, let me back up. I don't think we need a policy. I think we need an outline procedure that the treasurer can follow. Because if the current treasurer is not the treasurer in three years, we still want this process to be going on. I don't think we need a policy. I just think we need to write down a proper procedure for this. That's just my two cents.
Well, if we keep the sections in the policy book.
It's going to be that updated, right.
Then it will just reference, for example, like it'll be sent annually. The information will be provided by the insurer. It'll be provided to the town and be sent out during open enrollment and then reference of responsibility of the treasurer or something. Just so if anyone looks in the book and says, "What are we getting on HIPAA?", they can read that. And then they're gonna, they can talk to the treasurer and, you know.
Okay. If you vote that, I can prepare that and leave that on your desk for signature. And then it can just be buttoned up.
Can you remind me, so we kept 501 and 502 as is because we wanted something in place before we struck?
Right, we didn't want it to be gone for any period of time. So, last meeting, I presented to you what the town of Seacon sent out and said, "Hey, do you like this?" And you said, "Yes." And then we worked, the treasurer and I worked together on a, you know, what other treasurers do, we asked. And that's what they do. And she said, "That makes sense. I have no problem doing that." And so, we will just put pen to paper and make it official if that is how you vote tonight.
Is it both 5 and 1, 501 and 502, or do we only need one?
Well, so, right now, we still have 501 and 502 because you didn't want to strike anything. So, I would say.
Replace 501 and strike 502?
Strike them both to be replaced with this new.
A new 501?
Outlined procedure.
New 501 that is going to be the language we just discussed?
Right. It just won't be referenced as 501 anymore because as we've gone through this manual, the numbers are changed. This will be, right now, we go through the name of the policy. Computer use policy, social media policy.
All right.
So, I would just say, if it were me, I would, or I am requesting that these 501 and 502 be stricken and replaced with this updated process that we've described tonight.
Is that good enough for this process to get kicked off?
She's got it, yes.
Okay. That I'm okay with.
I'll make the motion that we strike policy 501 and 502 as recommended and that the, that reference to HIPAA be made in the manual as outlined. You're going to come up with the outline based on what we said.
An outlined procedure be developed for the treasure collector to follow.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Good work, everyone. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next on the agenda under old business are the five-year wish lists. My understanding on that is we are going to hold off until next week. Is that correct?
Yes.
At next meeting. I would ask that we continue this to our next meeting. I know you organize and plan these agendas, but I have not done my wish list yet. So, I would like to have two more weeks. I have the advantage of being able to look at yours and Mrs. Golatz and everybody else's, so.
I'm sure there's probably a lot of overlap. I haven't.
There is definitely going to be some overlap, but I would like to have some input on it. So, if we could hold off until next meeting.
Is that a motion to table?
It would be a motion to table to next.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
So, I will provide the town administrator with my wish list and you'll provide the board.
I'll put all those together.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I just, I'm sorry, if I may, very quickly.
Sure.
I, Selectman Goulart put in one about the districts and I just, I loved that. And I just wanted to let you know that I thought that was a great idea.
I haven't looked at that.
Studying the districts, the fire district, North State Fire District, Electric Light District, and the Dayton Water District.
Over the years, these have come up several times. And in the Dayton Water District, it was when the mortgage is paid off because we don't want to assume that debt for the town. There was actually a committee that worked on the Electric Light District. And then it seemed like you have to file legislation and for some reason, they just backed away from it. But it's time to talk again.
I think a total conversation on governance should be had. Just with, like, the treasure collector, for instance, being not appointed and being elected, we run the risk that we're going to have somebody who is, and Mary's great, this isn't anything about her, but the nuances for municipal finance and borrowing, you cannot learn it overnight. The school requires that you are a treasure collector for at least a year before you are even able to attend school and school takes at least one to two years.
In all honesty, the only requirement is you must be bondable.
You mean here?
I mean, if you're elected to the position.
Yeah, you're going to be bondable, yeah.
A treasure collector, whatever. You have to be bondable.
Right. So, and then they don't necessarily have to show up either. So, that would put us in a real jam. But anyway, I, I like that. I'm sorry to take the floor.
Nope, it's okay. Let's move to discussing the proposed plaque for the Dayton Police Station. This is going to go for the public. On the interior of the building is my understanding. I had one, I read a piece of correspondence from Selectman Goulart as was prepared in the packet. I actually had the same, I didn't share all of her concerns, but I did say that the Sergeant Sean Cronin is the clerk, not the secretary. That was my only change to the plaque from my perspective.
I, I know that Selectman Goulart is going to say some things on this, so I'll yield to her. I just want to point out that this review right now is only to be sent to the building committee. Now is the time for our commentary. And I do believe it comes back to you for final approval. But this would be to get your comments in to them, their meeting on this.
Well, I think, I think we're going to have to put this off till the next meeting because they did meet, was it today or yesterday, Karen?
Yesterday.
And Mr. McGee said they, he collected whatever had been sent to him and they were going to act on it. And I sent an email to him today and he wrote back and said that the committee looked at it and they're going to be making a recommendation. So, what's going to come to us for us to act on is.
Might be different?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
And I will tell you that, based on the comments that I made, I asked the town clerk to do some research. So, we knew exactly who we were talking about because it got to be very confusing because there's been three town meetings and three dead exclusions and, and projects, whatever. She did all that research and I gave copies of that to Mr. McGee to take to his committee. So, they considered all of that. So, I think that they have come up with something that they really feel good about. And it's going to come to us and if we see something and we want to make a recommendation, it's not cast in stone yet, no pun intended. But anyhow, they, they've met and acted, so we'll see what they send.
Do you want to send any comments to them? Or you've, I know you've taken care of yours.
When I sent that one to you, I copied it to them. I didn't copy you because I would have violated the open meeting law.
Okay.
So, but my main, the things I pointed out were, just quickly, it should be Dayton Police Department and Communications Center because it is the headquarters. In the future, we could have other police stations, like we have another fire station. This is headquarters. I suggested all the wording, the letters be the same size because this looks like an afterthought and we know what the project is to total. Town seal over here, town of Dayton, Dayton Police Department and Communications Center, blah, blah, blah. The board that should be listed on this plaque is the board that took it to the town for the initial $2,005,005. And Sue looked all that up, okay? That's was, that's, that was the board and it's none of us. That's the board that had to first take the project and convince the voters to vote for it. We get the $2,005,005, okay? Obviously, the board has changed several times since then, but that was the original committee. And the building committee, yeah, the same change you had, yeah, it's clerk. To be added to this is Annette Tweedy, who got this thing going, and James Howland, who served on it. And that was the original committee that Sue found. Now, that's what I sent to them. You know, the, the rest of this, as far as the architects and all of that, you know, it's fine. But what I explained to them was, I was around when we built two school buildings and I remember the research they had to do. Who was, the superintendent didn't change, but who was on that school committee that actually did the work? Because I believe they listed the building committee and I think they listed the school committee at the time. But it's the original committee. It's not the middle one, the last one, or the anything else. It's the original proponents. So, anyhow, that's what I sent to them and I don't know what's coming back.
My personal opinion on that, and again, we're going to, we're, we'll wait until they send it back. I partly agree with you. I think what I would be amenable to is having, and it's not up to me, only me, is like, for example, Board of Selectmen, Dean Cronin, like Selectman Cronin was here when we brought it back, not, not just the first time. So, what I'm saying is I'd be okay with adding the names of the other selectmen and building committee members over the years who played a part, not removing it just to the original one. Because I think that, even though that might be historically how it's done, I think that negates the work that people did because there were people who took the ball and ran with it after it got started, so.
I can tell you, the research showed the original committee, because even I couldn't, I picked the wrong names. The original committee involved back in 2012 for the $2,005,005 were Tom Pius, Dean Cronin, and Bud Whalen. That was, that was the committee, okay? And obviously, elections took place and that changed. Don't think there's been a big change in the building committee itself.
No, that, I think.
I mean, we had somebody pass away, we had somebody resign, but they're not subject to election, so, you know. But anyhow, we'll see.
Selectman Goulart, should we vote to table this until we hear that from them?
I'm going to make a recommendation that we table this until the next meeting for an agenda item.
Okay.
I'm sure we're going to get it before then so that we can look at it and give feedback and discuss it, whatever. Maybe have them come to the meeting if we do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to table this agenda item. All those in favor, say aye.
On the, do we have any discussion? Can we have discussion? We can't have.
There's not on a table.
Oh, because I would have said something earlier.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, just, you can.
You're going to let me speak?
Yeah, of course.
No, I, I just think this, there should be somewhere on this plaque that we should be giving credit to the taxpayers who have funded this. So, some way that we can put on here that we, funded by the residents of Dayton, funded by the taxpayers of Dayton. I'm not sure how you want to, but we, the people who did the heavy lifting.
Generously.
Yes, generously.
In recognition of and support, in recognition and appreciation, for the support from the citizens of the town of Dayton.
Just remember that for two weeks, yeah, so we can, yes, no, I agree. The, the building committee did the heavy lifting on this clearly. The Board of Selectmen, I'm not so concerned about what names we use. In fact, if there weren't any names, if it just said Board of Selectmen, I'd be happy with that. But if you want to recognize those that initiated this, that's fine. But I do think the taxpayers ought to get some kind of.
In recognition and appreciation to the voters of the town of Dayton.
Well, it's not, it's not just the voters, though, because even though.
Excuse me, the residents of the town of Dayton.
I would say taxpayers because businesses also, but I don't know if you.
We'll figure out a word for.
This we're getting, like, you work inclusive.
We have to, we have to, we'll figure it out.
Yes, so I just, that was my only comment, though.
And they may have something, they may have something that they want to.
Yeah.
Put on there that, you know.
So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. That was a good suggestion, Selectman Pacheco. Thank you for that. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a request from the police chief to take police cruisers out of commission. We received this, or this was submitted, actually, on December 20th, 2018. The vehicles that he's requesting to take out of commission are Cruiser 5, a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria, and Cruiser 1, a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria. Are either these his old, his old cruiser, the police chief's?
No, his old cruiser is now being used by the detective, I think.
So, do.
Are either of these better than what the business, excuse me, the building commissioner is using?
Uh, well, right here, it says, "No longer reliable," so.
Oh, not only that, but the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, I think, would not allow us to.
And Cruiser 1's being, or one of them is used for parts right now.
But he, but my understanding on the way the language works is if there were someone else that he needed to give a vehicle to in the police department, that's okay. You just can't give it to another department, is my understanding.
So, these are, uh-huh.
What about that vehicle we? What about that vehicle we had transferred to the Highway Department at the last meeting? We voted to allow that transfer.
No, Highway Department vehicles are exempt.
No, no, it was police vehicle going to Highway Department.
Both would've been exempt at the time, though.
We'll have to look back into that. Yeah, that's a good point.
It's not on the road yet, so that's good.
Who is the issue?
Oh, it's true.
Declaring surplus, and they would dispose of it in the best interest of the town. We are, I have spoken with Detective Richards, who's handling the vehicle inventory, about holding a, an auction sometime soon.
Okay, so the motion would be to declare Cruiser Five, 2008 Ford Crown Victoria, and Cruiser One, 2010 Ford Crown Victoria, surplus property, and to authorize disposal in the best interests of the town.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
That would allow them to advertise, we got a, a dead or dying cruiser, but it would also allow them to take parts off the other one, you know.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. So the next two new business agenda items are sort of procedural. We've discussed this before, and in all actuality, she's been doing this for many years, and I can't imagine anybody else doing it. The first is to appoint Selectman Goulart to the MMA Committee on Energy and the Environment.
I'll make that motion.
I will step down and second that motion. Discussion?
And this is funny, because I just got the email that said, your appointment is going to be made at the annual meeting, which is the thing we're going to, so it's good we're doing this. Because I said, I, yes, I'm interested, and this is going to the board. It's, it's kinda strange, if you wanna serve, you must apply to the MMA. But once they say, yeah, you can serve, you should go back to the town, because you're actually representing the town in the capacity. So that's kinda how that, you know, the whole thing works out.
Well, we appreciate you representing us in Boston on Beacon Hill at MMA, so we appreciate that.
Not Beacon Hill.
Not Beacon Hill? Okay.
Up the road from South Station.
Not as nice, but still.
We're not, we're not in the high altitude area.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. I did mean that. We appreciate you representing the town on that committee.
This is the first thing I ever got appointed to, and I gotta tell you, this has been one of the most beneficial, I had no idea what this would ever lead to and the things that got involved, but this has led to so much financial benefit to the Town of Dyton because of environmental stuff, because of training, because of exposure to the, what's going on at the state level. CCC, I never would've known about that. I would not have been at that signing, you know. It's just...
So valuable, so valuable.
All you have to do is show up and participate, and, and it, it doesn't cost, the town reimburses me for my senior trade pay up in my pocket, which is diddly. I mean, it's just, it is. I try to get people to, from other communities, to volunteer. You gotta be able to go there in the daytime. That's the whole thing, you know. You gotta be able to go, but...
I will make one request, because I am gonna vote to appoint you. If you would please let them know at their next meeting, I'm not sure when it is, that we became a Green community.
Oh, definitely.
I'm sure they wanna know.
Oh, I'm always blowing my horn about things that have gone on in Dyton, stormwater and everything else.
Champion over here. It's great. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain, because it's actually my appointment, but I am willing to serve.
Absolutely, we're excited. So the ayes have it, that motion passes. And the next is another formality, to appoint Selectman Goulart to the Greater Attleboro/Tonhousing Consortium.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Selectwoman Goulart to the Greater Attleboro Town Housing Commission.
Consortium.
Says committee here, but...
Yeah, no, that's why I caught myself, because I knew. Okay, so I will step down and happily second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
The ayes have it, and that motion passes, and thank you.
Thank you.
For representing on that consortium as well. Next on the agenda is to act on the auditor's engagement letter for fiscal years 2019, 2020, and 2021. Madam Administrator?
Uh, this should, I mean, this is my first time it's coming before you, but you should've received it every three years prior to that.
I remember receiving one in 2015 or 2016, if I recall, yeah.
Uh, so this is, we are subject to audits, and this is our, these are our people who do that, and they do a great job. So this is the commitment for the next three years, and it gives us the cost of that, and both the Town Account and myself recommend this.
So I have no issue. I think that they have done a tremendous job in a lot of, and Selectman Goulart, I think you would agree, a lot, there have been issues, times in the past where their findings have raised things to our attention that should have always been on our radar, but they just, you know how it is in municipal finance. But, so I have no issue. They do a superb job. I do want to bring it to my attention of my colleagues that there is a thousand dollar increase every fiscal year. So I don't know if that's a hang-up to anybody, but that, that is what they're asking for. So I have no issue with it because of the quality of their work, but it is, it is a part of this, so.
Yeah.
Selectman Goulart, did you have anything?
I'm willing to make a motion that we award the contracts for financial statement audits to Roselli, Clark, and Associates for FY 2019 at $19,500, FY 2020, $2,500, and FY 2021, $21,500.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
What I will say about this, this audit firm, their prices have been very stable. We had a firm before that was very good, but their annual increases, I felt, were out of whack, let me put it that way. It was, had nothing to do with quality. And we went out to bid, and we got a company we had for, I think, one audit, and we weren't... The reports came out, but quality wasn't there, let me leave it at that. And then we went out again, and I believe, we've, we've had this firm for years and years, and they have been excellent.
And you're satisfied with the cost, that's reasonable for what they're doing?
You know, and the funny thing was, when, when I first got involved with this, seeing that being on the Finance Committee, just having come out of an audit department, we were internal audit, but our, the university is audited by the big guys, okay? And knowing the kind of things that are done and the kind of costs that were involved. And plus, at the regional high school, we had to hire auditors, so, yes. I believe when we went out to bid, because we were concerned about escalating costs, we were paying well in excess of the 2021 year at that time.
Wow.
It's interesting, yeah.
I'm satisfied with, I read through everything. I'm okay with it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, colleagues? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next on the agenda is to extend the tradesman services contracts for fiscal year 2019. Madam Administrator, was there anything you wanted to add that maybe wasn't clear from this correspondence? That kinda outlines it, the letter?
Um, I think this is pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, the, so for the public's benefit, the building commissioner had gone out, and we call it the tradesman, this is for your electrician or HVAC person, that you negotiate, not negotiate, excuse me, procure a rate, and it's good for a certain amount of time. In our instance, a year, we're just looking to extend that to the end of this fiscal year. We are going to redo that this spring.
It looks like there were no increases, like, I shouldn't say that. It looks like there were no changes in the rates. Is that correct? Because the, it just says your current hourly rate, so it sounds like it's literally an extension.
It's sort of what you just did with Palmeri Associates tonight, is just adding, is just bringing it down to extending the term. And they, Mrs. Brady did reach out to the two individuals, and they're on board, and they're okay, and they agree, so we're just looking for the vote.
Uh, if, well, we could have a discussion now, or I will accept motions, and we can have discuss.
I'm ready to make a motion that we extend the tradesman contract for Barrowby Plumbing and Heating Incorporated through year ending June 30, 2019, at the current rates as stated in this letter.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Thank you.
PRS Electric.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the current tradesman contract for electrical services, for electrician services to PRS Electric at the current hourly rate as stated in this letter.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, and that's through June 30, 2019, excuse me.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion?
I just wanna tell you, I was talking to this man today, Mr. St. George, and I told him about the open house, because he did the wiring for the building. I said, if you can come and bring your wife, one to two, on the, you know, the day. I said, because when you finished, everything was still left unfinished. He finished his job, so he's really looking forward to come back.
So nice.
To come back and see how it's done.
Thank you for doing that.
But he, he commended the town, because he said, the amount of money that that project cost the Town of Dyton, as opposed to having to go out and build a new office building or office space, you would've expended that money for engineering and architectural services. What you spent, you ended up with a finished product, that's what he said.
Gorgeous, by the way.
And you preserved it in a historic building. Yeah, he was very complimentary. So he says he's gonna put it on his calendar.
So we have a motion in a second to approve the rates, the, excuse me, the letter as prepared this evening regarding PRS Electric and their rate extension. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We do have some correspondence, and again, one second, public, I just wanna get this signed. We don't wanna hold anything up. Next on the agenda, we did get some correspondence regarding the June 4th, 2018 town meeting from our Attorney General, Maura Healey's office. And it just says that they approved Articles 31, 33, 34, 36, and 37, that was the computer, and the MAP amendments related to Article 34 from the June 4th, 2018 Dyton Annual Town Meeting.
So I apologize, I think this might be in here in error. The one that should be here is about the October ones, where there were two bylaws, just that they are signed off on. I apologize.
Those were, and for the public, the bylaws they signed off on were pertaining to the marijuana overlay district?
Right, and the Town Administrator bylaw, those were the two, yes.
So...
The mixed-use bylaw.
Yes.
Not the marijuana overlay, mixed-use.
No, it's just, it's just overlay, I thought.
It's mixed-use.
Now I'm confused.
Because that came out at the hearing we had with Mr. Pacheco.
Okay, yeah, so it's the mixed-use, yes, and the major change this time around was allowing cultivation facilities to locate in the industrial areas, but it was...
Nailed it. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have email correspondence from the current chairman of the Planning Board, Peter Bembe, and he submitted this to the town clerk. He is not intending to run for reelection for his current seat on the Planning Board, and so that makes me sad. Mr. Bembe, you have been a fine public servant, someone that I have looked up to, not just for your wealth of knowledge, but also for your temperament and how you carry yourself. And you will be sorely missed, and I hope you will reconsider, but I don't blame you if you don't. So thanks and appreciation for all that you've done, sir. Next on the agenda, we have correspondence from the Greater Attleboro/Tonhousing Home Consortium regarding public outreach meetings. I'm sorry?
I was saying consortium.
Sure you said consortium.
So essentially, there's some meeting information that will...
It was today?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm looking at it today. I'm sorry, there was one earlier at 10:00 a.m. in Middleborough, at the Middleborough Town Hall. There was also one that started at 6:00 p.m., and we probably, there was probably another meeting going on downstairs at that time. That was in Attleboro.
This is, this is the second round of these meetings, because Mr. Ferrer emails them to me and asks that we post them, so that's why you can, Sue, post these. So I think they're gonna have a, probably gonna be a few more of these, because the last ones, Middleborough was not the last one. It was Tonhousing and Attleboro, and so I think there's gonna be a few more rounds, so. I had planned to go to this one, but when I looked at my schedule, there was other things booked, and I said, well, we've, we've discussed it, but I did want to go, but it didn't work out that way.
We, so next, under correspondence, we received a letter from the law firm representing One Connection Corp. Did I say that right? I think that's correct. It's like we're there in heights, figuring out how everyone knows each other and is related. Okay, so this was directed to, you get all the fun correspondence, Green Communities, One Connection. And they were just letting you know that the letter they sent was a notification. They intend to cite a registered marijuana dispensary, including cultivation, which is great. I didn't even think there was room for that there, so that's fantastic, processing and dispensing in the Town of Dyton. They filed the appropriate application documents, including a management and operations profile, and they intend to submit a citing profile with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and I'm sure you will be the first to know when they do that.
They're, they've been wonderful to work with. I wanted this in there. I know people have been asking, when, where are we in this process? So that's really in here, just to inform everybody.
And they have to know it is a process. Not only do they have to go, we did the letter of non-opposition so they could kickstart the state permitting process, licensing process. They also will have to go through the Board of Health, now that the bylaw has been approved by the Attorney General's Office. They will have to go through the Board of Health permitting, local permitting process, so. This will not be overnight, but like anything that's worth it, if we hang in there, good things will come in the end. So that is fantastic. We also received, and this is part of the packet, which was posted online and emailed, a notice of filing public hearings and procedural conference from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. Madam Administrator, do we have to give the dates and times of the public hearings, or are we okay to default to what we posted?
We have this on the website, and if anybody's interested, you're welcome to go. You can send written testimony, if you'd like to do that as well. And this posting is on our website, so for more information, look there or give us a call.
So the shot of it is, they wanna raise the rates again, folks.
You might wanna write. So I was gonna do this under Selectmen's Reports, but then I reviewed our recently passed policies and procedures, and I think that this probably more falls under an announcement, simply because this came from a public meeting. I did attend the Dyton Mohibis Regional District School Committee regular meeting last night. There were two reasons why I attended the meeting. A, I feel like the emails they send never get to me, so I just really wanted unfiltered communication on two very important projects. One was the modular units, the other one was the roof project, the roof replacement, excuse me. Regarding the modular units, and again, please, I'm just regurgitating what was presented. It looks like the students who will be moving into the modulators will be ready to move into the modulators at the end of the month. The goal is for the preschool to move in sometime over February vacation. There was some concern from parents who were present at the meeting regarding disruption during school hours, and it was said that this is a lot of weekend and nighttime moving, and that's to keep the disruption to a minimum. So that was good, and I was satisfied with that. And just so the public knows, as with any public improvement project or capital project, there were bumps in the road, but they stuck with it, and they're getting... there were bumps in the road, but they stuck with it and they're getting through it. That's the modulars. Regarding the roof, the roof is about eighty percent done. I'm happy with that. And they're telling us that it should be done at the end of the month, January 31st. So, great. Again, there were some bumps in the road. We got through it. And I was very pleased at the end of the day to hear that that's how they have been progressing on those two important capital improvement projects. And I know there are folks who were interested in it, so those are our updates. You don't have to go to the school committee meeting. They are longer than ours. You do not want to sit through a school committee meeting. They're exhausting. But we appreciate all that they do and we appreciate their oversight of these important capital projects. So thank you to everyone and thank you to the presenters last night.
Thank you for going. I did not go to it. I did tape it. I don't know when I'm going to have an opportunity.
You don't have to now. I just gave you the, I just summarized an hour into...
The modular units were supposed to be ready during the school vacation. We were hoping that the transition would happen at that time. Unfortunately, it didn't happen.
And they, and I'm summarizing in the interest of time, but they did give some details on why.
And you're satisfied.
It wasn't on project, and I, I was satisfied with their answers. These are things that, you know, happen, so.
Are they within budget?
Yes. If they didn't, it wasn't explicitly asked last night, but nobody said anything about needing more funds to finish the project. I really think, I think it was a matter of, of time, so.
The roof, I know, is a guaranteed cost, so I know the roof is not going to change at all, but the modulars are fine too.
Yep. Okay. On the agenda next, Selectments Reports and specifically the order, in order of taking update regarding the Bristol County Agricultural High School.
Okay, the update is actually on the grant of easement. The grant of easement is like a deed where the county, for one dollar, is granting to the town of Dayton permanent easement for the Center Street sidewalk. It had been voted and signed by the county commissioners, but when it came back and I looked at it, I talked to Bobby Williams from the architect firm and Adele Sands, the superintendent director, Tom Ferry. And the way it was originally written sounded like if during their construction project, they do anything to that, they can't do anything to the sidewalk project. And we know that with the new construction, when, when the, they start work across the street on the north campus, the sidewalk and the light are going to be moved, which means they're going to make a curb cut in the sidewalk. So the language that was added by Attorney Costa was that any work done on the sidewalk by the grantor, the grantor is agrees to restore that sidewalk to its original or better condition. So that allows them to do what they have to do. Make the curb cut, move the sidewalk, move the crosswalk, and put the sidewalk, I guess the berm back, whatever they have to do. So that was that. Now, that was sent to the county commissioner's office and I spoke to their administrative assistant manager. And it's going to their next meeting, which I believe is the 16th of this month. It will be back to us for the 23rd. Once we get that grant of easement, we will have the order of taking and we will vote to accept the grant of easement. We will vote the order of taking. And Mrs. Brady has already put through a request for funds, which is a dollar for the land, for the easement.
Wait, can we afford that?
Well...
It's going to be tough.
Two-thirds vote.
Move some things around.
And then there will be fees, seventy-five dollars apiece for registering the grant of easement, the order of taking, and the my law copy of the actual plans, and then postage to return the first two documents back to us. And that will make everything complete on that sidewalk project. Then it will address their future building that we don't be concerned about.
No wonder you didn't have time to go to the Greater Attleboro Consortium meeting. Too busy. Now, we appreciate that very much. And the update as well.
I have one other thing. I went to the police academy graduation on the 20th of December to see Michael Marshall. I got to tell you, that, it was held at the East Bridgewater Junior/Senior High School. And I sat way up in the crow's nest in the back row and I had a great view of everything. I believe there were forty-eight cadets, men and women. And talk about a very impressive ceremony. I have never been to one before. I don't remember the board being invited, quite frankly, but the...
That was the first one I recall being invited to.
The keynote speaker actually showed videos and talked about the two officers that were recently killed on the Cape and in, was it Waymouth or Braintree, that area? And it showed them as young officers and of course, they had families. I mean, there were parts of it were kind of tough, even if you didn't know the people involved. There were so many people there that I drove in and it said, more parking. So you get off of Route 18 and you go into Plymouth Street. And I kept driving. I got to the school, more parking. I kept driving and driving and I can now see Route 18 and Ocean State and CBS and I'm thinking, I'm going to be out on the highway. Found a spot. It's, it's just so many people. I just follow, it's like the T, you follow the crowd. They must be headed in the right direction. I got inside the door. There were all police officers lined up here and there was a police officer in front of me and some civilians. Well, there's so many people in uniform, you don't look at them. They're just all police officers. I'm standing there waiting because I don't want to cut through and I'm looking for a seat. And I, I look and it's the Dayton Police Department. I saw, I see, I saw Officer McWark and I poked him. And then the guy in front of him turns around, it's the chief, but they're all in dress uniforms, so you don't really, everyone is dressed up. So there were other officers there. I didn't see them until I left and then when I went downstairs, I went out a different exit from the top floor and I saw them. I, I didn't get to see Officer Marshall because he was in the Mayfair. There had to be thousands of people in there. But the, the program itself, they have superlatives. And I mentioned to Mrs. Ehrenstein, the superlative for best, I will call it physical conditioning and gains in ability to run, short of your time. She lost weight. She could do more push-ups and sit-ups and all of that stuff. Happened to be the one officer from the town of Berkeley. And her first name was Catherine. For some reason, I'm thinking Conley, but I'm not positive that was the name. But when you see them, I mean, white gloves, spit polish, all in good physical condition and tied in with that whole program, it's so impressive. As I said, there were parts of it, it would bring me to tears. You know, especially for people that had sons, daughters, brothers, sisters graduating. It went for a little over two hours. And so when I left, again, I followed the crowd because they were going out a separate wave from that top level. And I came down the stairs and at the bottom, I saw again the chief and Sergeant McWark, Officer McGovern. I didn't see Officer Marshall. I didn't see Sergeant Nichols. But it was really good. Very impressive, proud, you know? They looked so sharp. And I happened to walk out with a police officer from Middleborough who, who actually had a connection to the town of Dayton. And she's getting ready to retire, but she mentioned people she knew in town and so forth and so on. And we both walked out to the same direction to find our vehicles, but, but it was. If we get invited again, if anybody can go, I'm telling you, it was, it was special, really.
Thank you for representing the board.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Brady, Madam Administrator, do we have any acknowledgements besides Patrolman Marshall who did graduate from the academy? Congratulations, sir. We'll file that under acknowledgements tonight. All right. We do have some minutes to approve and one set to accept for review. I am entertaining motions pursuant to those three sets of minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Selectments Regular Meeting of November 28, 2018.
You can do the other one too.
And also to prove the minutes of the Selectments Regular Meeting of December 12, 2018.
And accept for, Julia, the next one.
Oh, I should do the second one along with that.
Excepting like thing, like things.
And accept for review the minutes of the Selectments Regular Meeting of December 19, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, excuse me, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant 26A-19 in the amount of ninety-six thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars, eighty-two cents payroll. Warrant 26B-19 in the amount of twenty-one thousand, sixty dollars, thirty-one cents payroll. Warrant 26C-10 in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, ninety-eight, one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, ninety-eight cents. Accounts payable due to December 26 be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. 27A-19 in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars, ninety-nine cents payroll. Warrant 27B-19 in the amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars, eighty-five cents. Accounts payable be approved dated January 2nd.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. We don't have any public for public input, but I do want to make a statement to the public. I had received sort of some grumblings about some meetings in December that people felt have been too long. I am happy to report, which, you know, is, it happens, especially when we move to...
Was that grumblings from us?
No, yeah, mostly.
You can say grumble.
But I do want to say our last few meetings have been two hours. That is basically having a weekly hour meeting and I don't think you can get much more brief with, than that without sort of stifling discussion. I don't want to stifle discussion. I think the point of us being here is to have a robust discussion. So I want to thank my colleagues for allowing us to be a little bit more brief, but not lose our freedom to express our opinions like we were elected to do. And I know the people that are happiest are you, Cable, so I hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you, public.
And just to add to that, those meetings went a little longer because we had hearing.